Good afternoon, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Budget Meeting of Worcester Public Schools. We will start with a roll call.
Member Biancaria.
Here.
Member Benenda.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
And Member McCullough.
Here.
And Member Roy.
Here.
And Mayor Petty.
Here.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we're going to start with the budget. We're going to go into sections here. And before we do, I'd just like to say, Mr. Allen, Superintendent, and the leadership team here, Budget Book was pretty good. I know you get awards every year, but this was, these actually were summary, it was very detailed on everything that we're doing and how it's all tied into the financial plan and to the financial plan and also our future plans in the City of Worcester. So I just want to thank you for that. And there's a lot of tough decisions had to be made, and I think you tried to do your best, and we'll have that discussion as we move forward. But I think your recommendations are pretty good. And so, thank you for that, and we'll get going. Anybody else? Diana, you've got two minutes.
Thank you. It's just some facts in the budget book that I need to highlight. There are no questions in this. It's more factual of what I'm reading because I have some questions.
Ms. Biancaria, you don't have to stand up during the budget. You can sit down.
No, I, which is fine. So when we look at the SLOs, they're being disbanded. Those are our safety liaison officers. Our security officers are being disbanded, and we have climate and culture, and it's a heavy price of a million. We have four employees' combined salary at DAB that come to a million. We have 25 literacy tutors, 14 MCAS tutors, and seven ELS tutors that will be no longer in existence and not provided services. We have 10 schools that need intervention. The old version of that was underperforming data from DESI. Burncoat High School, Burncoat Prep, Columbus Park, Dougherty High, Elm Park, Forest Grove, North High School, Vernon Hill, Woodland Academy, Worcester East Middle. We have over 45 classrooms that will be shut down. There is strong evidence for this continuation with opportunities being lost. Reduction of 45 kindergarten to grade six teachers. Reduction of 41 grade seven through 12 classroom teachers. Reduction of 70 student support staff. Pupil instructional supplies is going from $100, it's being reduced to 75 per pupil. Each year, we ask people for donations. However, in the budget for one office under the superintendent, supplies are $100,000. We have on page 13, which reads, building rentals canceled $235,000, and parking lot rentals $21,600. But not mentioned is the $38,000 gym at St. Bernard's Church on Lincoln Street, and that's buried in the budget book. And lastly, we are losing educators. Anywhere together are words that are spoken quite often, but at this time, I'm concerned that the action is lacking. Student performance for data for 2023, according to DESI for MCAS, and this is in our budget book also, meeting expectations were down to 36%. And that was in ELA. In math, we're down 26%. In third grade reading, we're down to 25%. And that is for meeting expectations in all three categories. We need to look at what we are doing for education and how our classrooms are working. We have a great city, and our residents are concerned with education. I've received emails after emails on everything, and they're concerned. And I've also heard from a number of people who do not have students in our schools, and they are concerned with the education and the skills that our students and our kids are learning. Thank you.
Ms. Benenda, you're all guys. Go ahead and ready to go, Benenda.
My concern over the budget is the high salaries of, in particular, four central office administrators, as well as the number of administrators that are being kept at the central office versus the severe cuts that is happening at the school level. So to be specific, I looked at four contracts, the three deputy superintendents and the superintendent's contracts. The original contract for the superintendent was July 1, 2022. Salary was 265,000. July 1, 2023, increased to 271,625. July 1, 2024, increased to 278,415. And then a new contract was started again on August 10, 2023, for July 2025 to July 2027, 295,223, and 2026, 304,80. Also added in that contract was yearly an 8% annual on the salary, annually added to an annuity. The second one is the chief financial officer and also deputy superintendent. Contract was started July 21, 2022. The salary 225,000, 3% of the annual salary as of July 1 every year. I had the ability to forego the 3% and instead have 3% added to the annual salary. Also added was salary increases for each fiscal year thereafter by the same percentage increase that went to nonrepresented employee group as approved by the school committee. Then in December 7, right before the new school committee came on, the previous school committee updated to contracts, one Mr. Allen, one Dr. Morse, changed the date till 2028, automatically the extension of the contract and longevity. And that salary is reported out by telegram at 250. The next one is Dr. Marie Morse, received her salary July 21, 2022, 198,750.
You just name the position. You don't have to name anybody's name. You can name the positions.
Name the positions, sure. These are all deputy superintendents. 3% of the...
Yeah. You've got another minute or so, but go ahead.
Say again?
You've got another minute or so, but go ahead. Oh, you have another minute or so, so the microphone's not working that well.
Oh, that's fine. I'll talk quick. Is three, hers was also 3% of the annual salary and also every year being able to also receive what nonrepresented, received according to the union contract. Also, on December 7, less than a year, in three months after the past contract, this contract was extended to 2027. Salary was increased to 22800, prorated also back to the beginning of the school year, and longevity both for all three deputy superintendents. That's a lot of funding going just in that area, and so the concern is very high salaries, 8% per year being given to the superintendent. Nobody gets 8% per year in any other contract in the district. And yet, we're cutting very important special education teachers. 67 is what it said in the book, an avid teacher. We are cutting special ed in other areas also. And my last point is the culture and climate specialists. That salary of altogether of $1,169,362 is concerning. That would include 34 positions. So while we are cutting teachers in the classrooms, we're adding people to roam the corridors that A, are not culture and climate trained. And so maybe what we should do is take the desks in the classroom and move them out to the corridors, because we are increasing the number of people roaming and decreasing the number of people that are directly teaching our students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Mailman, followed by Member McCullough.
I didn't realize we were doing opening statements, but since we're going to do the opening statement thing, I guess what is really on my mind, and I do appreciate that everybody's views are, that's what we're here for, to hear multiple views on what's going on. But I am, I have poison ivy over, all over my face, and I'm in a bad mood. And I'm in a bad mood because the state has hurt us in a big way. A 1% inflation rate is impacting us to the tune of $12 million. Another, the state also impacted us with their lovely decision about that lovely charter school that just started, which is like 3.2 or 3.3, about $15 million. I respect that there are people that have been, that were in the system that believe that their way of doing things are the only way. I believe that we are, that the, what has been put before us, so that's $15 million on the state out of this $20 million. Let's remember why we're making these cuts as we go through this stuff. And also acknowledge the fact that at some point during the summer or any of these other budgetary periods where they come back with the fair share, for example, it is not going to impact us right now, but it may impact us down the road. So again, I'm sure there are people in this room that have just been waiting to have this discussion, and I'm cool because I'm ready to have this discussion. But grounded in my mind is exactly where this cut is coming from. And yes, classroom teachers, nontenured classroom teachers are going to lose their job on top of the retirees, et cetera, et cetera. We're a poor district. We're only $60 million into the $100 million that are owed on SOA, and the state is choosing to take another $12 million at least back from us. So that really stinks. But here we are, and I think we have very capable people that worked on this budget in a, in a way that was not, in a way that it was as encompassing of everybody as possible. And so I respect that, and looking forward to asking our questions. Thank you.
Ms. McCullough.
Thank you. And thank you again to administration for doing the budget book for us every year. I know that it is quite the task to put this together with all the backup information in addition to just the numbers and where the changes are. So I do appreciate that. And I also really appreciate, you know, the meetings that we've had where we've been able to ask questions. I have been on the phone multiple times this week with deputy superintendents and the superintendent and the chief of staff, asking multiple questions as I prepared for tonight and for our next budget session. And again, I appreciate Member Mailman bringing up that we are really in this position because of state funding and the inflation factor, and that this isn't a reflection upon anything that we've done to mismanage funds. This is literally coming down from a poor decision on the inflation factor. And putting that aside, I respect as well that people have different takes on the positions that have been added or different takes on the amounts that people are paid. I think we're seeing it on the city side right now, too, that if we want quality people in positions, we're going to have to pay them. And that's the same thing we did with the teachers' contract, and we got that done. And we have excellent people in place in roles down at DAB that are doing work that we can't even imagine. They're working around the clock. And this budget was done in an extremely thoughtful way. We are definitely going to have questions. I'm not giving a big check mark on this. I have questions, and I'm expecting some answers, and I'm going to have to make some decisions if there are any changes that I'm going to recommend. But I really do believe that we are doing work that is shown, and it's coming up in the data that is coming out, that we're starting to hear about, where change is happening and improvement is happening, and educators are feeling supported. And I hate cutting classroom teachers. I don't want to cut anyone. I'd love it if we could keep the budget the way it is and repurpose positions as we know we need to, now that we've gone through different departments and see where our strengths and weaknesses are. But unfortunately, we're not in that position, and we have to make those cuts. So I do believe that administration has come back to us with a budget that was thoughtfully put together, that the cuts are going to have the least amount of impact in the classroom as possible, and that we're going to provide support to those teachers because we have high expectations, and if we don't have the administrative staff to support those educators, the work is not going to get done and the data is not going to get better. So I do have questions. I look forward to having the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson.
Yes, thank you to the chair, to everyone. Again, so I guess I will echo kind of what Member McCullough and Mailman said in regards to where we, how we got here in regards to the inflation rate and state funding. I would also say that for those of us that were on the committee last year and kind of were doing the negotiations and with administration, we knew that we were, fiscal year '25 was going to be difficult. We just didn't know what the inflation rate was going to be, which then compounded the issue that we're in today. So I just want to highlight that, that we already knew that we were, you know, going to have some difficulties in fiscal year '25. We just didn't know what the magnitude was going to be. Again, I think we all sit here as a school committee, an elected body here, and all want to do what's right for the district, for our educators, for our students, and for the administration and for the city whole. But we have some hard decisions to make. And again, this is a recommendation budget. We all have a duty to take a look at that and make, have some deliberation around that and have some discussion. I'm really hoping that that discussion and the deliberations that we do have are respectful to everyone involved, because I don't think there's anyone sitting in this room who feels comfortable about having to have this discussion and those kinds of things. So I'm hoping that this is respectful and that we consider people's time that they put into this, and the time that people have put into taking a look at this budget and making some hard decisions on this. It's not easy. And, you know, again, I look forward to having some discussions, having some questions answered in regards to how we got here with the budget and the decisions that, that were made. And thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So I think we're all set, and...
No, it's okay.
Number Roy, go ahead.
I'll wait.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to get into it. So I just want to again thank the administration for this very transparent budget book. And it's easy to go back and we've got past votes that we've taken, like that, to give them on the form of a motion, get all the contracts to be signed prior to the superintendent coming to the Worcester Public Schools, and the number of years and the amounts, and you can get those, too. Okay, if we're going to go back and look at the years and the effects it has on the budget. Okay, so first one up is retirement, page 192. Mr. Allen, do you want to give a recap or just go to questions? It's up to you. How do we usually do it?
Just jumping to the questions. I can give a recap. So the general fund recommended budget is $25,924,380, representing an 8% increase over FY '24 recommended budget. All of these are either assessments provided to us by the city or contractual obligations to educational secretaries and building custodians.
Okay. Member Mailman.
Sorry, just a couple, I think, clarifying questions. This does not include any teacher pension. This is not related, include any teacher pension items in here.
Through the chair, that's correct. These are just for employees in the City of Worcester retirement system.
Okay. When we negotiated a bunch of different contracts through the chair, did we, and we talk about OPEB, we have an 8% increase in this item. If OPEB, if we had achieved a little more, would that have impacted this 8% increase in negotiations? Or no, all MTRS?
Through the chair, there is no impact on OPEB as it relates to this account. This is truly just funding, fully funding the City of Worcester retirement system on our priority to chair.
Thank you.
Any questions on retirement? Since that's a motion to approve, I say for the new people, I say a motion to approve doesn't mean we're approving the budget. We always can go back, but it's just say we went over it and we're moving on. That's all. So, so we have a motion to approve. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Yes. Okay, we have transportation, page 193. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended general fund budget is $5,813,017, representing a 13% increase over FY '24. All of the increase is for contracted out-of-district transportation for special education or McKinney-Vento.
Okay. Very straightforward. I think with Mr. Johnson, I mean, Member Johnson, followed by Member Benenda.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration, in regards to the McKinney-Vento budget line of $1.2 million, based on our fiscal year '24 of $630,000 and the expenditure that we had of 878, can you just answer to why the recommended budget is of 1.2, please?
Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, so in FY '24, we actually had some ESER opera-related grant funds that we attributed to offset the cost of McKinney-Vento. The actual cost for this year is $1.9 million, $750,000 in grants that we've been, that we can use this year but not available to us next year. So the increase is really going from $1.9 million to about $2 million next year, but because we are taking possessions and hiring drivers of our own 70 driver staff, we believe there will be some significant savings next year, bringing it down to one, at least $1.2 million. But this is one account that we'll be bringing back to the school committee through the quarterly budget process as it relates to actual expenses.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Member Benenda.
Just a question, was there an amount of money put back in the budget from running our own bus company here that made a difference in lowering the cost?
Through the chair, so as we've presented a number of times, the savings of running our own bus company yielded $3.5 million in annual savings. School committee has allocated most of those funds back to improving transportation services and moved some funds to instructional supplies and materials in prior years.
Member Benenda.
So does that get added, Brian, to the top of it, like it says, general fund, grant sources? Does that get added as a budget money item somewhere in the book?
Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, I don't understand the question.
Where does the $3.5 million show up in, in the book, under transportation?
Through, through the chair, so the funds have already been allocated throughout the budget.
So the, so the money is dispersed throughout the budget to savings?
My question is, you know how on the budget shows like, okay, we're getting this much from the general fund, we're getting this much from grant sources? That's a source of funding coming back in. Does it, does it ever get listed? I guess is the question.
Through the source, it's not a, though savings was not a grant source, it would not show in that way. The savings has been reallocated throughout the entire general fund budget. Much of it is within, stayed within transportation through either additional positions or some additional technology, but it's already been fully expended throughout the general fund budget.
What's that? Ms. Benenda? Ms. Biancaria, I mean.
Thank you. Okay, on, when we look at this and it, grant sources, the $2 million, we're not going to see that again, correct? That's up above, under grant sources, under transportation?
Yes, correct, through the chair.
So that's completely gone, and we don't foresee any replacement of that?
Through the chair, at the current time, we, we're not aware of a replacement of those funding sources.
Okay. Thank you. And then when we look at what we did with special education out of district, in '24, we spent 2.3, but we're going down to recommended budget of 1.7. So what is the difference?
Through the chair, that because we're bringing some of the 70 vans in-house.
So we're bringing the vans in-house?
Yes, so we'll be providing some of that transportation, providing another cost savings to the district. We're estimating 70 transportation savings by us providing our service of $1.6 million next year.
Okay. All right. In that, and I have to ask this, is, so that's this maintenance and the gas and everything is included in that, so we don't have to increase that dollar amount?
Through the chair, you're correct.
And we're looking at 70 new vans? Is that what you said?
Through the chair, I, we have 39 on order. I'm not sure how many we have in-house. So we received 28 of the 39 so far.
Are those in use presently or no?
Through the chair, five of them are in use.
But we have the capacity to use all of these, correct?
Through the chair, we're hoping that we'll have all 39 staff for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Also in transportation, anybody else? Transportation seems like it's a pretty good move, Mr. Allen. More savings.
Thank you.
Good job. So motions to approve. Roll call.
Member Alvarez. Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benenda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman. Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes. So next up, we have athletic ordinary maintenance on page 195, and you have asked to take the coaches' salary on page 166, so...
Mr. Chairman, the recommended general fund budget for athletics is $491,342. It's a 2% increase over the FY '24 amount, and then we can do coaches' salaries after this account.
Okay. Any questions? Member McCullough.
Thank you. So always my annual question through the chair to Mr. Shea is, do we have enough budgeted for what we need for equipment and uniforms for our students?
Through the chair, the business office and the superintendent's office has been gracious. We feel through having dialogue with the principals, athletic liaisons, and coaches that we have sufficient funding. We are, however, looking at more ways to increase the funding through fundraising and those opportunities. We, matter of fact, have a meeting tomorrow with the superintendent regarding that topic. So we feel like we're fully funded, but we are still looking at opportunities to be able to fund our teams in other ways through grants and things of that nature.
Thank you. And my other question is, for FY '24, expected expenditures was significantly lower than the adopted budget, and was the reason for that, is that the gate receipts, is that the reason for that, or is there another reason for that, or maybe perhaps I'm misreading that?
Through the chair, no, you're correct. We actually had some accumulated gate receipt revenue that we used to lower the cost in FY '24.
Thank you. My only other thought on this moving forward is when we are able to add more money back into the budget, that when we're looking at, you know, coaches for different teams, that we're ensuring that we have specialized coaches for things like track and field so that kids have an opportunity to be more competitive in other areas. And I know we can't do that for this year, but it's just something on my mind for the future. So those are all my questions for athletics at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else southwards? Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Under maintenance of equipment and supplies, we have the AEDs for the heart. Is that something that is under that supply, or is that under something else in the book?
Through the chair, that's under a different account, under school nurse supplies in the 130 account.
So it's under...
School nurse supplies.
School nurse supplies? However, we do have those on, available... School Nurse Supplies, okay. However, we do have those on, available at Foley, correct?
Mr. Shea.
Through the chair, yes, we do have those available at Foley Stadium. We also have them available at all the schools, especially the portable AEDs, because under Michael's law, we're required to have them for practices and games for our student athletes and coaches.
Okay, so, that's under nurses. Quick question, do those have to be checked or sealed, or how does that work?
Mr. Shea. Uh, Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, the contract that we have provides for the testing of the AED machines.
Okay, thanks.
What's that?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else on Athletics? Okay, we'll go to page 166, coaches' salaries.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended budget is $896,941. It's a 2% decrease from the prior year. It just reflects actual expected expenditures. There's no reduction in coaching positions.
Okay. Member Biancaria?
The middle school programs, there seems to be a dip in what we're doing. I guess when we look at, the adopted budget was 128, but we're going to 87, and it's 32% decrease.
Through the chair, that's the line that has the, it reflects the actual expenditure. If you look at what was spent this year, it's the 87, same number, 87,351, reflects all of the middle school coaches needed to support the programs.
So, did we lose programs?
Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, for Athletic, I think, I don't believe we reduced any middle school programs.
Through the chair, we did not reduce any of the programs at the middle school.
Does anyone know why there's a difference there, though? I guess that's, 32 is kind of high. So, I'm wondering what changed from 128 to 87?
Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, we can provide a report that explains the change.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, please. Do you want that in a motion, that I request that we get a middle school program on the 128, the comparison to 87?
Yep.
So, there'll be a motion. Thank you.
Okay, so, approve that, both of those items collectively, launch the motion, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item up, we are on health insurance, page 197.
Mr. Chairman, the general fund budget recommends $61,798,135. It's a 4% increase over last year, reflecting premium increases and enrollment increases in this account.
Okay. Question on the health insurance, it is what it is. What's that?
I just want to, I believe this account includes health insurance for currently employed individuals of the Worcester Public Schools, all kinds of people, teachers, all kinds of people. And then, is that true?
Through the chair, so it includes any active employee who's elected to choose health insurance, and any retiree that is covered by health insurance.
And retiree, okay. So, so if we had, this would be a recusal item if it applied to your, from what I understand about conflict of interest law, would that be correct, Mayor, or Mr. Allen?
What's the question?
I said, this item, if this isn't, this would be people that would have to recuse themselves if they had not done a disclosure, if they had, you know, husbands, wives, children in the system should be recusing themselves, isn't, that is, I've taken this class about 12 times, and I believe that's my understanding. Is that, is that your understanding, Mr. Mayor?
That's up to the personal preference of the individual to make that statement, to be recused, and, but there are conflicts, and if you have relatives that are in the system, yes.
Thank you.
You can vote on the entire package here, you just can't on the health insurance.
Right, but I, I mean, even during the, during the city council deliberations, and deliberations on this party from many years prior, if people had relatives, they would recuse themselves from items like this, salaries, this, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, sometimes. But health insurance seems to me a difference, like, I don't get the health insurance, but some people in the council do, which some people here might have in the school committee, and.
I just think it's a salary item, but, okay.
Okay, okay.
Just want that in the minutes, thank you.
The motion is to approve, roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next up, we get the Workman Comp, beginning on page 199. We have three items there. We have salaries, non-salary, and fringe benefits. So, that's again on page 199. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended budget's $2,354,096. It's a 3% increase over the current year, based upon expected expenditures for next year.
Member Mailman?
Since this, through the chair, since this is a self-insured plan, is there anything that we can, is there any trending analysis we can do, or it's kind of, I mean, so, is this budget item too, is this a safe bet? Have we been running at this rate year over year?
Through the chairs, so on page 199, we actually show the prior eight years of spending history. So, the recommended budget for FY '25 is fairly consistent with what we've seen for the last three or four years.
Okay, good point, thank you. Let me, just one follow-up, I'm sorry, Mayor. So, is there anything, though, and maybe to talk to Coop, trends happen in comp, and are you seeing any trends that are, you're concerned about, or do you feel like?
So, through the chair, we have some preliminary data that we can certainly provide back to you in a report. That gives us a lot more information.
Okay, that supports this number, I imagine. Thank you, thanks.
Okay. Any questions on Workman Comp, those three items? Anybody get it? Okay, so take those collectively, on the roll call, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next up is Personal Services, non-salary. Personnel Services, I'm sorry, page 200. Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, the recommended budget's $2,727,834. It's a 3% decrease of the FY ' '24 amount. There's 13 subcategories in this, within this account.
Okay. Any questions on the Personal Services? They're all listed A through M. Member Mailman, followed by Member Biancaria?
Thank you. Just wanted to comment on the legal help that we get in the salaries, that lines, can you further describe what that line supports for legal services?
Through the chair, so, the majority of the funding is for labor relations attorney and for special education or DOJ-related attorney. So, it's most, most of this line is related to the two attorneys the school committee has retained for those two purposes.
Through the chair, do we pay to the city, you know, when we're getting city opinions, does that come in, or is that part of the administrative fee that the city takes for different items?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, at the current time, there is no pass-through cost for city legal services to the school department.
So, it's?
But those are for generally supply and services contracts.
Right. So, I know we've been delayed with things over the years, and recent, probably this year too, in terms of just the lack of legal, and I think I brought this up at the last budget session. I do think that we are, we are delayed with a bunch of things because we don't have legal resources that we can go to. So, not the year to talk about it, but I would definitely be in favor of us being able to contractually have somebody that could help us get contracts placed, et cetera, et cetera, because I think our delays impact, you know, the work that Facilities does, and no doubt others as well. So, I guess I'm just making that public comment.
Through the chair, if I can, I think in watching the city council's last meeting on Tuesday, the city solicitor had mentioned they've actually hired another attorney to assist with contract development.
And as I watched as well, I think we're still one or two short, but thank you.
Okay, okay. Miss Biancaria?
Thank you. When I look at the legal settlements and the dollar amount, I'd like to make a motion that we have some type of comparison. It's not something that we have to rush into, so if we don't get it until the fall, that's fine. But when we look at what we're spending and how much, if we had someone that was under a contract, so we established a dollar amount, such as Miss Mailman was talking about, I'm certainly in agreement, so I will make a motion that perhaps in the fall, we could receive some information in reference to what the legal expenses would be if we did have an in-house contract, even if we had one person. And that perhaps could save us some funds also have available to us, before quick questions and so on, versus a continuous run on a bill. So, we have budgeted 460, we had budgeted in prior year for 89, however, when we look at our expenditures, they're at 722. So, I have some concern with the fact that we're not looking at this in a realistic manner, and perhaps we, at some point, need to look at what our legal services include.
Through the chair, if I can just talk about the expected expenditure of 722, that also included this year almost $300,000 in settlements.
Correct.
Okay.
However, no matter how we look at this, it's still a dollar amount that we have to take a look at and review. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Then we move on to what we have on page 202, which is still under Personal Services, under Security Guard Services. I still question the fact that we're not going to have security guards at our schools. I feel as though it creates a presence of promise that we keep our schools safe. I'm not saying our schools are not safe, I understand that. What I'm saying is, it gives a presence that we are looking, we are paying attention, we are coordinating with someone who is not a teacher, who is not with the students all day long, but they become familiar with who the students are, who the students are that are tardy, that have to get a slip every day. They are looking at these students, they are, they know it's a familiar face. And I have concerns that that is not going to occur. So, I ask that H be removed from this Personal Services and be a separate vote, if possible.
We just vote the salt together, but you can vote no on the category.
Okay.
Member Benanda, or also, Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Just a quick question. The Worcester Education Development Foundation, in which I agree, for the $35,000 for the work they do for the district, I was wondering, under Personal Services, are there any funding that's given to other organizations like WEC, LEI, early childhood, which should also be included under Personnel Services?
Mr. Allen? Were they, are they somewhere else in the budget?
Through the chair, there is no, I'm not aware of funding for WEC or LEI in FY ' '25.
I think the question is, were there other organizations besides WDF that we provide funding for, for services provided to the Worcester Public Schools during the year?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of any.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair, we are going to be contracting with, no, entering into an MOU with LEI to ensure that they are lowering the adult ESL programs, or, I'm sorry, the adult ESL waitlist that has been in, in, over 700 people on that waitlist since I got here. So, we are doing that. I don't know where that would reflect in here, because that's through our adult education program, but that's the only one, and I don't think it would go into Personnel Services. You can correct me, Mr. Allen.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, it would not be in part of this budget.
Okay.
Through the, through the chair, just on that last point, I'm hoping that later on the budget, we talk about the decrease in adult ed grant in here, that we're not taking funding from our own program and moving that funding to another organization when the need is so great, to continue the work that we're doing. We certainly can discuss that, because I think that does come up in another part in this book.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Okay, some motions to approve, plus we have an order, we'll take those collectively. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So, please note that he recused, for the record, that, that, Member Johnson recused himself. Okay, so we are on Special Ed Tuition, page 203.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended general fund budget for FY '25 was $25,814,200. It's a 19% increase over FY '24, mostly at the, for out-of-district tuition placements.
Okay. Member Mailman, followed by Member Roy?
These dollars, I know that the, I believe the next iteration through the chair to Mr. Allen or Smari, the next iteration of Student Opportunity Act, I think that I, my understanding is special ed is, has, was not fully realized and discussed or considered under the prior Student Opportunity Act, and hopefully we'll have a new Student Opportunity Act. Are these the kind of dollars that will be part of that discussion, or are they, or is it other parts of special ed funding?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so the Student Opportunity Act did two things. The first one is, they changed, they're changing the assumed in-district enrollment of special education students. That's the area that, which is not, would not impact this account, is the most underfunded in the foundation budget. The SOA also is changing the out-of-district assumed rate closer to the circuit breaker level of funding, which would impact this account. The question is, is that level of funding still accurate? And in both cases, both of those examples, we've argued, special education is still significantly underfunded in the foundation budget.
So, if we were to win the battle on the next battle at the state, would you imagine these $25 million would be impacted in a great way?
Through the chair, so the cost would still be there, but would we be receiving more money from the foundation budget?
That's my question. Okay, thank you.
Member Roy?
Yes, under?
Yes, under the Central Mass Collaborative, I have a couple of questions. So it's going down by 5%, and that is an important program for many of our youth that need those services. What exactly would be being cut, or would be services, or would there be personnel being cut where it's going down by 5%? Could you explain like why that is a different, difference?
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, the last two years, the Central Mass Collaborative has given us a credit for services over the last two years, and this year, we asked them for the credit upfront. That's really just taking a credit upfront instead of during the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Member Benanda?
Through the chair. So my understanding is that, so at Central Mass Collaborative, we pay, prepay ahead for seats, you know, in each of the different programs. And my understanding is that we are requested less seats, especially in the Woodward Day program that we have there. Is that true?
Through the chair, the credit we're receiving is because of Woodard Day. Yes.
Yes. How many less seats then are there going to be requested for Woodward Day?
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, so mathematically, we used to pay $3 million a year. We're now paying $2 million a year. So it's two-thirds of the seats, one-third of the seat reduction based on actual usage.
I'm sorry, what was the final number? I couldn't hear it.
So the assessment for next year is still $2 million. It was previously $3 million.
Okay. My concern is, although we did not use that placement for students that are put on long-term suspension as much as we had in the past, that to limit too many seats, if we needed to use them, is then, are we able to increase the number of seats?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair, we have found alternative means to expelling children from our schools and still keeping them with us, ensuring that they're graduating. We had a few students just the other day at Worcester Alternative Program that had we sent them to Woodard, they would not have graduated with us. So we're finding alternative ways to do that, and we've been doing that for the last two years. We will not need additional seats.
I guess that's a, it depends upon your view of that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on tuition programs? Seeing none. Okay, so motions to approve. Thank you, Dr. Mari. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Bencaria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we are on Instructional Materials, page three, 205.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended budget is $4,911,445. It's a 3% increase over last year.
Okay, any questions? Member Johnson?
Thank you to the chair, through the chair to administration. So I think I had this conversation with you, Mr. Allen and Superintendent before in regards to the instructional materials. You know, last year, we budgeted 100 per, per student, and now we're going down to 75. I know there was a conversation with the building principals in regards to that they were okay with, with doing that. In regards to that, I just have a question. Well, in regards to this, this one, we budgeted for 100. I was made aware that at some point, were they capped during the year at 70, I think it was $75 or $80? Was there a cap put on the schools at some point during this year? Through the chair.
Ms. Allen? This current year? Yep.
Huh? This current school year, yes.
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, in the past, it had been our practice to freeze a dollar amount at the beginning of the year and then unfreeze that if available in the second or third quarter, depending on other costs within the district. Since we've had ESER funds, we were not freezing the instructional supply account.
Okay, so there was no freeze this, this past school year on that account?
So schools have to spend the dollars by, I think it's May 1st, in order for the purchase order process to be completed and materials to be received, but there was no freeze that I'm aware of in this, on this account.
Okay. So my, my next question is, is, and I, and I read it. So instructional and school leadership materials, last year, we went at 1.4. It looks like the expenditure was 568, and this year, you're recommending $2, $2 million, an increase of 38%. I did read through this. My first question is, is the, can you just talk about the ESER fund that we used, the 638, 477, in regards to the instructional technology stuff? Can you just kind of explain that to me?
Ms. Allen?
Certainly. So there was many educational technology applications that we purchased when we, during COVID, that we've been continually funding through ESER funds, and we've pared back. I think, I think Dr. Karyas is coming to help me here. So we've actually pared that almost in half in terms of the spending for next year based upon usage for the schools, but I'll let maybe Dr. Karyas to answer that further.
Through the chair. So we did a full audit, which we do every couple of years, of all the instructional technology applications. And so we were able to, with teacher input, looking at student data and apps that have come online and been absorbed by other companies that we already have, such as Screencastifier, for example, is one of them we bought during the pandemic. Google just came out with a new thing. It's free. We already have it. So we were absorbing different things. So we're able to save $603,000 in apps. We also went back to all of our companies that we were keeping and begged them for discounts, and we were able to get discounts on a lot of them.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, no, I'm not done yet.
I said, Member Johnson.
Okay.
You're done.
So I, I get the special ed $400,000, but can, can someone explain the climate and culture to what is needed, or is it necessary in regards to materials that will cost $200,000? Through the chair.
Ms. Allen?
I'm going to let Mr. Tony answer that question.
Mr. Tony?
Through the chair, there's several different things that we use for it. We've used it for adult SEL training, the Boolean, Boolean Approach program that we have, the restorative training, even coping skill tools, along with our CPI training materials.
Through the chair to administration, in regards to that, if you recall, how much was spent in climate and culture from this fiscal year '24 in regards to, to, to that budget?
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, so I believe the budget because of ESER was $25,000.
$25,000?
Yes, and it's going to $200,000.
Okay. Okay. To, to the chair, I would like to make a motion. I actually would like to hold this instructional materials until the next hearing. That would be my motion at this time.
Okay. We're still going to ask questions. It doesn't, we're going to go back. Everything we can go back to anyways, so. But, okay. We'll put like that, we'll put that on the list to talk about next time.
Next time.
Okay. Remember, Benanda?
I was hoping Dr. Karyas would stay for a minute. My question is actually for her. Some teachers have shared that they're not going to be one-to-one on Chromebooks. At least, that's what they think next year, that they're just going to have carts with Chromebooks on them. And they're saying that they were told that the lease that we used to have with the Chromebooks has ended, and we're not going to release. So I'm just wondering, are we still a one, with materials, are we still going to be a one-to-one district at all schools?
Dr. Karyas?
Yeah, through the chair. Mr. Walton is coming up because he has the information on the new lease, but yes, the district is committed to keeping the one-to-one. Some schools are doing it a little differently where they're available all day long, and then if students want to take them home, they can, but they don't have to. So, but we are committed to staying one-to-one. And Mr. Walton has the details of the new leases.
Mr. Walton?
Through the chair. So we used what's called ECF money, which is emergency connectivity funds from COVID to buy 27,000 Chromebooks, right? So we do the math, right? We say we're one-to-one, right? But we all know that those Chromebooks break. They've got to be, their, their some are lost or stolen. So we need a buffer with that. So we had an additional 5,000 Chromebooks that were coming off to the end of the lease that we used as our buffer. And this, so those are going away. And then this coming fiscal year, we're leasing an additional 6,000 Chromebooks, and we're doing that every year going forward. So in terms of one-to-one, I don't know if the question has to do with, does every Chromebook go home, you know, or do we have enough for every single student? I'm not sure. Let me know if that didn't answer your question.
No, thank you. I remember trying to get 125, I'm trying to get 25,000 Chromebooks and the leases. I think their concern is that they won't be able to use them every day, or when they want to in their classrooms because they're no longer in the classrooms. They'll be in place in different areas where you can go get a Chromebook if you want. So would one school, for example, in one place, somewhere in that school, have enough Chromebooks for every student?
So, so through the chair, some schools, generally the high schools, allow the students to take their Chromebooks home, right? So that's, that's easy math, right? You either have a Chromebook in your hand or you don't. Some of the middle schools and then the, the elementary schools have gone back to using carts. So the problem with that is if you say, well, I want a cart in every classroom of 30 Chromebooks, okay, well, that's going to be more Chromebooks than you have students, right? Which, I've already given the numbers, we can't, we can't meet that demand. So there may be some, I don't want to call it friction, but like maybe some disconnect there between you're in a classroom, you don't have a cart, there are enough Chromebooks in that school for all your students, but they're not in your classroom, right? So that's, that's a model that those schools work out, whether that means the student checks the Chromebook out at the beginning of the day and then checks it back into that cart at the end of the day. But we don't, we don't manage that at the district level. But we do tell the schools, there are not enough Chromebooks for a Chromebook, 30 Chromebooks in every classroom. You know, that's, that's unrealistic, unfortunately.
And just my last question is, what do we, I mean, I knew this was an issue before, is what do we do when we don't, we don't have enough Chromebooks because kids are losing them, breaking them? Are we doing an insurance policy? I know we looked into that. We could do that before. Like, what's the plan for replacing the ones that, because that's a lot of kids using Chromebooks, so it's probably a good number every year, right, that have to be replaced?
So through the chair, yes, it's, it's a constant, it's a constant issue, especially at the middle school level. The breakage rate, not only in Worcester, I mean, Newton gave similar figures where, do you remember what it was? Was it something like 30 or 40% of the Chromebooks are broken at the middle school, even in Newton, right? And so I'll let somebody else figure out why that's the case. But in terms of that, yes, it's a constant battle. The, the Chromebooks, when we say broken, could be a screen broken, they could be literally in pieces. So we, this year, to sort of get over this hump of, you know, all these broken Chromebooks, we're working with Acer. We buy the extended warranty with Acer. And we said to them, look, you know, we've got to send some, we've got to send thousands of these Chromebooks back to you and help, we need help repairing these. And they, they're, they're working with us on that. They're sending us boxes. And, you know, we, we're really starting to see that number of broken Chromebooks, you know, that are in the queue go down because of that.
That's it. Ms. Bencaria?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we get, we receive an inventory of the Chromebooks per school. So we have an idea as school committee members, how many we're going to be looking for. Because there was a time that we had a donation from a family that wanted to work with us, and they donated a number of Chromebooks. So if we have this opportunity and we know what we're specifically looking for, and we have the possibility of a donation, we can zero in on what our actual needs are. And apparently, it sounds as though we may need some help with our Chromebooks here so all of our students have a one-on-one in a classroom. And I realize how you explain this. You know, there's certainly repairs, there's certainly broken screens and so on. But I, we need as school committee members to know what the numbers are so we can then work with the public to perhaps find an avenue or work with someone who is looking to donate. And I think that'll help us with that idea. So that would be my motion. Thank you. I do have some categories I do want to discuss also here.
Okay.
When we look at column A for instructional materials, when I looked up information for what we actually receive per student, we get, from what I understood, $734 for state money per student. Am I correct on that, Mr. Allen?
Ms. Allen?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Sure. We read here that the budget provides $75 per pupil. However, is it correct that through the state, we receive 734 per student?
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, I actually don't have the foundation budget rate sheet with me, but I can get that response to you.
Okay. From what I gathered, that was what we receive per student. So we're looking at $659 going into, the monies that are not used per student go into the general fund? Per student?
Well, through the chair, that, whatever that dollar amount is which we can get would encompass more than just this one line item. It would also include things like Chromebooks and other technology used.
Correct. That's why I'm asking if the monies go into the general fund.
Through the chair, yes. The foundation budget dollars would go into the general fund.
So that would be the general fund. That was 659, we'll say. We'll say 660 to approximately work that. So we're looking at approximately 15 million that comes from that. But I have a concern that we only have 75 per pupil for instructional supplies and materials. And the reason I say this is because every year, I hear the same thing. And that is, we don't have construction paper. We need copy paper. We need pencils. We need crayons. We need paints. And we're always looking for supplies for our kids. I would like to make a motion that instead of 75 per pupil, that administration look at the numbers again, and perhaps we can have $100 per pupil. My concern is, we are going to be looking at a rough year, but the least we could do is have the instructional supplies and materials that they need and not be looking for the public to help us with supplies. We always end up looking for additional supplies throughout the year for certain things. And we do try, and our community does pitch in, but we certainly are going to have our limits. And I would make a motion that we ask administration to work with the budget book to perhaps present to us $100 per pupil versus the 75. to us $100 per pupil versus the 75 per pupil.
Do you have an idea where you want to, usually you make a cut with that somewhere, to move money from one account?
I'm not suggesting a cut. I'm asking administration to come up with a cut.
You've already looked at it, though. This is their presentation. They're not going to, I think, or maybe I'm wrong in that, but...
No, I look at, the office of superintendent has 100,000. So, if you're asking me, can we look at less money in the office of the superintendent since it's one office and perhaps work something else out? Or look at the climate and culture at 200,000 and come up with a better dollar amount than that? So, if we take 20,000 from 100,000, that's, or 25,000 from the 100, and 25,000 from the 200, that gives us 50,000. But at least spread it out a little so we're not looking at dollars going, coming away from our kids. And I'm not leaving the office of superintendent with nothing. I'm looking at the office of superintendent working with 50,000, and then climate and culture working with 175 versus the 200.
How much is the 25 dollars worth from 75 to 100?
So, that would give us an additional 50,000 for per pupil.
Through the chair, we need about 600,000.
600,000.
Right. So, those are the two that I come up with. If somebody else has any suggestions, I'm certainly open to that. But that's not how I was looking at this. I was looking at this is to, for an opportunity to perhaps look at the numbers and in another category, perhaps we can come up with something. But at this point, that's what I'm looking at.
So, remember Johnson? Remember Johnson's asked to hold this, maybe we'll get a report of the pros and cons of taking that out for the next, for the next year.
Okay. And in the meantime, if I come up with another area that can have a cut, I can also bring that up.
You can cut anything you want, anytime, right?
Yeah, okay. So, I have another question on this. School and student performance, 28-6, what, what does that include?
What, where are you? I'm sorry.
It's in category B.
B, okay. Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, Dr. Andrade is here. He can speak to that.
Who's that?
Dr. Andrade.
Oh, doctor, okay. Dr. Anjali? Ms. Bean-Carrie can just repeat the question as he comes up. Diana? Do you mind repeating the question?
To this gentleman. Okay, I'll wait till he sits down.
The question is, school and student performance. You'll be receiving 28-6, and I'm a little curious, on school and student performance, that's the lease dollar amount, so how do we figure that? We're looking at our students and their performance. So, what would you include in that student and performance for 28-6? Is that supplies, paper, pencils, pens, what?
Just turn it on.
Through the chair. It's just general supplies for the office.
General supplies?
Materials that we use, yeah.
That just doesn't seem like that much money is being spent in that department. Again, I'd like to see an increase in that dollar amount. I feel as though we should be paying attention to the student and school performance piece. Then we have office of commu, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Office of communications, 17-5. And then we have the reallocation for the district art repair line. So, when, this includes a great deal, and I certainly appreciate the fact that we're holding this because there are additional questions that are going to arise in reference to this. So, I thank you for your time on this, but I would like to see reductions in those dollar amounts along with the inventory for the Chromebooks. So, are we voting on this A, C, and D, or are we holding all of the instructional materials?
We'll hold, we'll hold in this category until next, next time.
The whole category, sir?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, so we're holding this. Thank you.
Instructional materials, correct. Okay. Member Mailman?
Have we asked for additional information before we file, before, in order to?
We asked, I asked for the pros and cons of the suggested cut. I did ask for a report for the pros and cons of the suggested cuts that were made by a member, being, being carrier.
Okay. So, you're, you're putting a motion to ask for cuts. I'd like to go back to, I thought it was a great question, to the climate and culture item. So, if, who was up here? Mr. Tony was up here talking about that? And that last year's spending was 25,000, and this year's spending is 200,000. This is, you know, this is a very important, it gets talked about a lot, and it gets, it gets supported, and it gets critical thinkers talking about what we're trying to do and how we're moving forward. So, last year, when we really started these efforts, all we had to, for instructional supports for the folks that we were putting in these roles was $25,000. Is that fair? Or, or were there dollars used for instructional supports for that team that came from SRR, came from other places through the chair?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, thank you for the question, because I actually can clarify my prior answer. So, the $200,000 is actually a consolidation of two accounts. It's consolidating funding for office of social emotional learning, which was $200,000 last year, and $25,000 for climate and culture. It's actually a reduction of spending for those two accounts from last year. So, as we're making administrative changes in social emotional learning, falling under this division, is also the assessments that are used by school psychologists and adjustment counselors and so forth that is also funded from this account. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. And as we think about, just so that we, you know, we're being as transparent as possible as we move along, I mean, if we were to find $600,000, I'm not sure, I'm not, I would be thinking about a different category to invest 600,000. And it would likely be, just so folks know, building subs. And building subs specifically for those schools that are hard to, hard to man, for lack of a better word. Thank you. All set.
Okay. So, so basically, just to recap your answer there, this category has gone down in money if you looked at the culture and climate.
It's going from 230,000 to 200,000 combined.
Okay. So, we got any more questions on this? Madam Superintendent?
Just to add a little bit to the work around climate and culture, that's one funding source for them from last school year that we've combined. They also had access to Title IV. Unfortunately, moving forward this next school year, our allocation has dropped from the state, from the federal level, and so we're reworking how we're using Title IV. But just for clarity, there, the climate and culture strategy that has been put in place since last school year has been funded out of a few different resources. This is now combining it into the one, and then we'll be able to supplement slightly with some Title IV as well.
Okay. So, Member McCullough?
Thank you. Through the chair, I just want to ask a clarifying question. Member Bean-Carrie brought up the question around, gosh, of course, now I'm losing my, the question about the low dollar amount for the school and student performance. That is just for materials in the office. It's not the support that they're receiving through the chair. Is that correct?
Through the, through the chair, generally, that's correct.
Also includes, I think, some membership to professional associations.
Thank you.
Okay. So, hold this. Member Benanda?
Ask one question. I used to have the band in my school, and the cost of repairing those instruments is really a lot. So, on this line that's here, they call it the art line, but then it talks about instruments. Is, is it for instruments?
Mr. Allen?
Thank you. I think it should say fine arts.
Oh, fine arts, okay. And the budget was, I could have saw the budget was more than 25,000. Is that a cut on that? That's a citywide, is that, that's a citywide budget, right?
We're wrong.
I'm sorry, which line again?
Yeah.
The repair, it says in a new district art repair line, 25,000. We, we always had somewhat of a line to repair instruments. 25,000 is not going to go far with all the musical instruments you have.
Through the chair, so in the past, it was funded from the curriculum line item. We're kind of covering out a line item specifically for instrument repair, and we can evaluate if that's the appropriate level going forward for FY '26.
Through the chair, do you remember how much, or do you know how much you used that line last year?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I do not. We can provide a report.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so we will, this will be the first time of business, and we come back in two weeks for the budget. And so, motion for the reports, roll call.
Member Alvarez? Yes. Member Bean-Carrie?
May I, would you please repeat what you just said? I'm sorry.
We're going to hold this until the next meeting. And this asking for the reports that I requested on your behalf.
So, good. My response to that would be yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next, we're going to page 207, miscellaneous education, non-salary capital, and rentals. That's page 207.
Mr. Chairman, the recommended appropriation is $8,957,677. It's a 1% increase over FY '24. There are 16 sub-accounts in this overall account.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Bean-Carrie?
Thank you. Okay, so we're looking at fees and licenses, 57% down. Is there a reason why that it says that the line to reduce to address the budget deficits? But what are we cutting, actually cutting out?
Mr. Allen?
So, within the narrative on the page, the city is actually providing us some additional ARPA money that we're using to support some of these contracts, star assessments, credit recovery software, and panorama tableau for FY '25. So, those will be coming out of City of Worcester ARPA money, and then would need to return to the general fund in FY '26.
So, we're getting money from the City of Worcester in reference to some of the deficits that we have, correct?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, we're getting one final ARPA allocation from the city. That's correct.
What's the dollar amount for that?
About $1 million.
$1 million, okay. Next, we have employee recruitment and mentoring. That line's staying the same. Dues and memberships, we're looking at minus 19, and this reflects anticipated membership costs. Are we not going to pay for certain things? It didn't say that.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, it's providing all the membership costs for the entities listed within this category. So, there is no reduction in memberships as listed here.
Okay. Then we go to building and parking rentals, which is E. And we're looking at a fueling station for transportation. So, we have, now these cutoff includes the transportation department, including the fueling station. So, it's not, it's not just the building, it's also the fueling station. That's a million five or a million six? We'll just round it up.
Through the chair, for the building, parking lot, and fueling station for transportation, it's a million six, correct?
Okay, so that should, so we're not looking at that as part of the transportation department, or is that totaled in the transportation department?
Through the chair, I would consider that a transportation expense.
Okay. Is it possible to receive, well, I'll make it a motion. I'll make a motion to receive what, in detail, the cost of what our transportation department is costing us presently. So, between the buses, the vans, the outside transportation, the fueling station, the dollar amount for rentals of what we are paying and what we're not paying, what we pay our mechanics, what we pay our bus drivers. So, we have an actual dollar amount, because when I did it, I came up at over $20 million, and I'm hoping that I'm incorrect. However, 24 years of banking tells me I'm about right. However, I'll give you that opportunity. So, my motion would be to have a detailed listing of what our transportation department pays for and what the costs are. Because when we had a different setup, we were looking at 13, 15, 16 million. But for some reason, this keeps going up, and I have some concerns with that. And I know we have some advantages and then some disadvantages when we have our own bus company. But for fueling station, I'd say renting this, because we have no other choice, we needed to do this, that's, that's a million five, just looking at that one piece.
Through the chair, through the chair, the $15 million for contracted services didn't include, that number didn't include the transportation that we were providing as well. But we certainly can provide an overall cost of transportation. We're very transparent in this budget. Move to self-ops, transportation was approved by the school committee on a six-to-one vote.
Okay. I understand what you're saying to me. But when I look at this, it's still, I find it very high for a fueling station in a facility. It's unfortunate because we are looking down the line, and the next three categories in the same E for building and parking rentals is we eliminated classroom for Channel Elementary, that was the 235. We talked about the 12-6. I discussed that in the beginning. But also, this piece, which was not added in the beginning of what we had for a reduction, and that was St. Bernard's Church Gymnasium for challenge and reach students, and that was 36,000. So, through the, may I to administration, what are we doing if we're not going to have a gymnasium for challenge and reach?
Mr. Allen? Can you repeat that question? I think we got distracted there.
Sorry. Yes, what I'm asking is, we eliminated St. Bernard's Church Gymnasium for challenge and reach students at 36,000. What are we offering? Because that was Monday through Friday, 7, 8 o'clock in the morning until 1 o'clock in the afternoon. It was 36,000. It was gym class for those kids. What are we offering those kids now?
Through the chair. We do still have space within the school. We didn't use all the space within Harlow Street. So, we'll utilize the downstairs space, which is large, to use the gymnasium area. We'll create our own, similar to what we do in other of the elementary schools. And we've done that at the other alternative programs as well, as we haven't had those.
So, we have a space to have a gym, and we didn't utilize it prior?
We have a large classroom space. It's not a gymnasium.
So, it's not a gymnasium? So, it won't have a basketball court? So it's not a gymnasium, so it won't have a basketball court?
Correct.
It, what, I guess, specifically, what will it have? Because this is a gym for students who are in Challenge and Reach, which we should be giving opportunities to these kids. And I have a concern that they had an actual gym to be in, but now we're gonna put them in a classroom, which means that it'll be a much smaller space, much smaller space compared to what they were accustomed to. And I don't know if that's a healthy environment for them, if it's gonna be a classroom that they're gonna have gym in.
They will have access to equipment like they have in the past. They won't have access to a basketball court.
So, but the area itself is gonna be minimal, correct?
It will be a classroom space within the building.
Okay, so the classroom space compared to a gym, um, is tremendous, number one. Number two, they won't have the basketball, which is in a huge part of what they did. So what are we giving for an alternative?
The physical education curriculum is more expansive than just basketball. So I think they can utilize the curriculum in a more expansive way than just utilizing the basketball court. At the Worcester Alternative Program, we did have, um, basketball hoops that were purchased, so that they can utilize them in the parking lots as well, which is similar to what the elementary schools have done in the past. They don't have gymnasiums.
So Challenge and Reach, are we looking to place basketball courts on the outside of the school?
No, basketball hoops.
Hoops, what, uh, no, okay. So, but again, that's the piece that they utilize most and have the most fun with and feel as though they can continue with that. And that's what we're trying to build, is the teamwork and so on, instead of being in a classroom. Um, I, so I definitely have some concerns with that. I would make a motion that we, um, work with Saint Bernard's Church to perhaps, um, come up with a dollar amount that would be less than the thirty-eight, maybe thirty-six, excuse me. Perhaps we could go with thirty thousand. You're gonna ask me where I'm gonna find that money? And I'm gonna have to go back to what I originally said, and that is look for something under administration. So, um, I guess now would be the time that I would make the motion that we look through the administration salaries for half a million dollars to be able to spread out to per pupil. Challenge and Reach students need thirty-six thousand, and we need some Chromebooks. So, that would be my motion, for administration to remove half a million dollars from the salaries at DAB.
Okay. Uh, member?
I have a few more things to go over, I'm sorry, because there are a lot of categories here. And, thank you. Instructional technology, um, this is where we're looking at the Chromebooks. So we're looking at a twenty-two percent increase, and the reason I point this out is, I don't have any questions on this, but I wanna point out that we're looking at a two million dollar, um, dollar amount here, with a twenty-two percent increase for the technology budget. And that will help us with the Chromebooks, purchasing various necessary units for incoming staff and other software costs. So my concern is, does that cover students or just incoming staff?
Uh, Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, this line includes, uh, student Chromebooks.
Student Chromebooks also?
Yes.
Do we know the division of what we're doing for student Chromebooks at this point?
Through the chair, can you ask that question again?
The dollar amount for the additional Chromebooks? Because this line says it only includes leasing Chromebooks, but it says purchasing various necessary units for incoming staff. What I'm asking is, are we purchasing for students also under this?
So, through the chair, yes, so this is, uh, we're not purchasing for students. It's, uh, we're gonna do a lease for students, for the Chromebooks, for the six thousand Chromebooks, and then, um, an additional thousand iPads. We use the iPads with the younger kids.
So we do have some coming in already, correct?
Correct. Uh, we haven't done the lease yet. We have to wait till the new fiscal year.
I'm sorry?
Through the chair, we have to wait till the new fiscal year to do the lease. But after July first, we'll be able to do the lease. So they haven't, they're not on the way yet, but we'll have them for this coming school year.
Okay, so that will help us in the Chromebook area?
Yes.
Okay, because we just got through talking about them. They're damaged and broken and so on. So I just wanted the public to be aware that we do have some coming in. Thank you. Okay, so then we have, um, school safety equipment, which is, oh, I'm sorry. We have L, uh, which is the school nurses' medical supplies. And that's where the ADE, um, management is. So I certainly am glad that, um, we discussed that, and that is in that account. And this represents the cost necessary for screening and healthcare, do, by the school nurses. So all of that is done within our schools. Am I correct on that? It's not outside that they have that done?
Mr. Allen? I'm not sure.
Through the chair, can you ask that question again?
Sure. When we look at the school nurses and the medical supplies, it mentions that the cost of necessary screening and healthcare, that is all done in-house? It is not done with another vendor?
Mr. Allen? It says in the report, it says right here, it says by the school nurses.
But I didn't know if they did that in the schools, or did they send them somewhere else to have the screening and report back?
Mr. Allen, do you know that answer?
Through, through the chair, it's my understanding it's done in the schools.
I'm sorry?
It is done in the schools.
It is done in the schools.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking this is, we have, we have students that have diabetes. So they come in with their paperwork, and we screen them, and we find out what they need to have administered. And the school, each school nurse does this at every site.
Mr. Allen?
I'm using that as an example.
I'm superintendent.
Through the chair, yes, that is what happens.
Good. So when we look at the volume of students and what we need to do, specifically at Worcester Technical High School, we have two-point-five nurses set up there. The problem I have with that is, they also have to cover at that particular site numerous field trips. And those field trips at times include those students. And those nurses have been contacted to administer different medical pieces that are necessary. And the two-point-five doesn't necessarily cover what their services include. And they do have the most field trips out of, out of our school system. Do we, and it said that we presently have two-point-five. Have we been splitting that for a while, or didn't we have three at one point?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, we'd have to get your report on, uh, the assignment of the nurses over time.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. I'll make that in a motion form then, that we receive a listing of that due to the fact that, um, that does affect how we take care of the healthcare administered by our school nurses and that, what they're responsible for. Lastly, we have category M, which is school safety equipment. Um, this line also includes professional development in staff training. So this is showing that we spent nine-hundred-and-twelve, but we're going up to one-point-four million to accomplish this. Do we know the dollar amount that is going towards professional development in staff training versus what we are spending on windows, door locks, and so on? What's the difference?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, I asked Dr. Morse, um, safety director, to answer this. But, uh, we are using I Love You Guys Foundation for Training in the District next year. That's a portion of the training costs for next year.
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, yes, next year, uh, we are planning, uh, extensive PD with the I Love You Guys Foundation that will include, um, revisit of the standard response protocol, but also reunification. Okay, uh, so yes, next year, we are planning an extensive professional development with the I Love You Guys Foundation that will include a two-day training, first of which will be, uh, review of the standard response protocol that has been implemented in all schools. Uh, and then the second day will be, uh, reunification efforts, uh, at our reunification site.
Do we know the cost of what you're speaking of?
Uh, the cost will be, I wanna say, uh, about fifteen thousand dollars for the, uh, training.
For the training? So the rest of these funds, which is over a million dollars, at one-point-four, will be utilized for door locks as access controls, intercoms, and door alarms? Or am I missing something here? So the, all safety repairs will be funded through this particular area?
So, through the chair, next year, we are anticipating continuing with, uh, lock costs. And we are going to follow the Guidepost recommendations and move on to in-building communication, intercom systems, and in-building communication, uh, looking at access control technology and surveillance cameras.
Okay, so are we looking at all of our schools or particular schools?
We will follow, uh, Guidepost recommendations, and starting with the, uh, schools that are clearly most in need of that sort of attention, uh, for any one of these areas.
Because I know that in the past, we've always gotten the radios, we look at different equipment. Um, and I was just wondering, on the window and door locks, how that ended up into safety equipment?
Dr. Morse?
Because that used to be under maintenance, so I'm a little, just confused on how that actually got moved around.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, we think it's a better reporting of the expense, showing it as a school safety improvement within the buildings.
Okay, so we're looking at the safety audit report when we make these determinations?
Through the chair, yes, we're following the Guidepost recommendations.
Okay, and what did you call them?
Guidepost, that's the vendor.
Right, but...
We're following the recommendation.
You used something else?
The recommendations of the Guidepost visit.
Okay, so it is under the safety audit?
The safety.
Because I thought you said something else. I, I didn't get the guidepost. Okay, so out of the recommendations of the safety audit, this is what we've come up with for monies that we will be using specifically towards school safety equipment, correct? It's not going to any other maintenance?
Through the chair, it's specific for school safety improvements. The recommendations from Guidepost will be a multi-year phase-in to complete all of their recommendations.
Then I would make a motion that we receive a quarterly report in reference to what is being done and what school site it's being done at, and that would be under the, uh, safety school equipment. Because we're looking at a million four, so we wanna ensure that as we move forward, this money doesn't change in our budget, and it provides school safety repairs specifically to that equipment.
My suggestion would be that we do maybe, at the end of the year, we do an executive session and, uh, on specific schools and what's going in there.
If we could have a quarterly report and executive session, that would, that's fine. But I would like a quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman, the Guidepost recommendations were actually sent to finance operations and governance. So we can have a conversation with, to figure out the best way to present a quarterly report that meets the needs of everybody, similar to like we do with our facilities quarterly report.
Right, and the reason, I'll be honest with you, the reason I'm asking this, when I look back at paperwork in Murphinstore School Committee, Worcester Smithel started to get their windows replaced in two thousand fifteen. And it's ten years later when the, the actual budget is now two thousand twenty-five. So in two thousand fifteen, we said, we, windows are gonna be replaced. And we've gone ten years later, and we still couldn't get them replaced, but we are in two thousand twenty-five. But we still have a bid and everything else to go out. So my concern is that we pay closer attention and we look at this. So I certainly would appreciate the quarterly report. And it can be an executive session, it can be in fog with whatever, um, the decision is, that's fine. But we certainly need a quarterly on that. Thank you.
Similar to what we do in the other reports, so, in the same category.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the motion. Thank you.
Uh, through the chair, to member Biancaria, um, I have a motion that you made about contacting Saint Bernard's. But I just wanted to clarify, I had a motion to work with Saint Bernard's to come up with a dollar amount, but I don't have anything further.
No, I think she changed that to cut a half million dollars out of administration.
Okay, I thought they were separate motions. This is one motion.
They are separate motions, but I'm always, I, I've been asked where the money would come from, so I added that additional motion, so there should be two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, member Johnson?
Yes, to the chair, I, I need to clarify something. Member Biancaria is making a motion that the administration find half a million. I don't, through the budget deliberation, this is a recommended budget sent by the administration. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
Correct.
It is our job to then, if there's anything that we want to cut that money and move it to, we need to do that ourselves, not administration, and then we would then take a vote on that. Am I correct?
Her, her motion is to take a half, that was my fault, I was gonna ask what line item she wants to take the half million dollars out of? Which, which category you said a half million?
I, I asked for administrative salaries, what, when we look at that.
Administrative salaries?
At DAB, yes.
Okay, so her, her, her motion is to take a half million dollars out of administrative salaries and move it to the categories that she mentioned in, uh, I think it's E. Does it E? Yeah.
Along with the other two that I was looking at, you asked where the money would come from?
What administrative salaries would be my question?
Right, that's...
That's my question.
Yeah, we can get a report, but we can vote it down, because I'm not really sure where it's coming from.
Could, uh, because I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, if member Biancaria wants to cut a half a million dollars from the administrative salary, she would look at a line item or a position within that salary, right?
Yep.
To make a motion to cut that position and cut multiple positions in order to come up with the five hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct?
Correct.
So...
So administrative salaries are on page?
We haven't gotten there yet.
Right.
One fifty-five, is it?
So what would you, what line item do you wanna cut out of that?
We haven't got to it, so I certainly, unless you wanna discuss it, I, okay.
You wanna hold that?
I guess this is what I'm saying.
We only have a few more minutes here, so...
Okay.
But you need to cut with a, a cut then. So you asked for a cut for administrative salaries, what category you wanted out of?
Administrative salaries, the entire piece of that. If, if they go back and look at administrative salaries at DAB, are there positions that they could recommend that we find the money in, that we can move over to these other categories? And yes, you have a budget book that they put together, but it doesn't stop me from making the motion in not being specific about a particular position. I'm not saying what particular position should be eliminated.
No, okay, there's three, there's three...
No, okay, there's three categories here. We have system administration, teaching and learning administration, and school-based administration.
I'm sorry, Mayor, what page would you be on?
Page 156 and 7.
Give me one second here, I'm getting the page.
What, Member Johnson's referring to, this has already been presented by the administration. So the administration's not going to go back and redo what they're doing. So it's our job is for the cutting to move the funds. So you can pick A, B, or C here.
So I'm looking at A or B.
Okay, which one?
We'll go with system administration.
Okay. Okay, so you're looking to take a half million dollars out of systems administration. Okay. And to fund those other categories, you would make?
Correct. If you want to be specific, it could be A or B, but we'll go with A if you want something specific.
Okay, Member Johnson?
So would we vote that now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're ready, I was going to wait there. I don't know if people have things to say.
Yeah.
I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Member Mailman?
Thank you. I was very confused about the fueling station questions. This is a, this category is building and parking rentals. Through the chair, was there a motion to move this somewhere else? I didn't understand what, no, there was no motion? Just a comment that it costs?
Correct, that was my understanding, yeah.
All right. And then through the chair to maybe for the Challenge and Reach, how many students are served in the program on average?
On Challenge and Reach?
Daily.
Through the chair, this year we currently have 78 students as of present, and that's 7th through 10th grade.
Okay. And clearly, this recommendation, you had a, you had discussion, you had a hand in making this cut too, correct?
Correct.
And so what, can you just tell us about the thinking that you have? As the professional that is making this decision, I'd like to hear what you think.
Through the chair, I think that there is a deeper curriculum that we can explore through physical education. I think that many of our schools, our elementary schools and our alternative programs are faced with not having usable gym space. And we see those teachers use some amazing things to access the learning. And I think we can do the same for our 80 students at Challenge and Reach.
Thank you very much for that response.
Also?
Uh, Member Benanda?
Thank you, through the chair. On the building and parking rentals, who is the vendor for the fueling station? The facilities department rental? The information technology department rental? And for the special education alternative program?
So all those departments listed except for the alternative program is Chicharron Properties? And the alternative program is Foster Realty?
Thank you. Chestony, what did you say it was? Chestony?
Chicharron for facilities, IT. And then for the alternative program, it's Foster Realty.
Through the chair, so how many years on the lease for those? I'm assuming it's, I forgot, was it 10 years?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, the lease for the alternative program is a three-year lease, so we're finishing the first year. The transportation facilities in IT is a 20-year lease.
Oh, 20, okay. And through the chair, is that a increase every three years of rental? Or is it a yearly increase? I forget on that.
Through the year, through the chair, it's a 3% annual increase.
And through the chair, you know, speaking to the people at the alternative school, they're very unhappy with that site. They don't feel that, they don't feel it's a safe site, number one. And I'm just wondering, are we looking for a better site for them because it really doesn't meet their needs?
Through the chair, the location was selected through an RFP process and it met the required qualifications of our RFP.
So are we looking, maybe it met our qualifications for the RFP, but the people in there don't think it meets the qualification. So are we looking for another site for them?
Through the chair, the RFP review process was completed with the special education department. We have two more years on that lease.
And we have to complete the two years?
We don't have any grounds for termination.
Thank you. One other question on the school safety equipment. So I'm very familiar with I Love You Guys Foundation. There's no charge at all for their forms and their books. Once you sign on to their MOU, you're able to run off complete books of all their forms. Myself, I had it done at the tech school. My suggestion would be to also have the tech school graphic department do it. So I don't understand the high cost of the I Love You Guys Foundation. Also, I forget if it was MEMA or FEMA, one of those, come in and do free training, and they also train the trainers. So I was confused at the high cost that was just given to us by Dr. Morse.
Through the chair, so the materials is free and we've made those available to schools at no cost. We've already provided much of that material to schools. The cost that we're providing is two days. It's for their trainers to come in and train the district. So we're actually bringing in their trainers for those two days.
Through the chair, I would love to suggest that save money in that account, that you also look into the excellent free training that is done through, it was either MEMA or FEMA, I can certainly get back to you on that so you don't have to spend that amount of money on the training. Thank you.
Mr. Walton, I thought it was $15,000 for the training, did I miss that?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Oh, okay. So $15,000 for safety?
Training.
Okay. Okay. And Mr. Walton, on the alternative school, I was there yesterday at the graduation. You seem to be, I don't know, I'd like to get a report back on the alternative. You seem to be very happy there, so I'd like to know if we have an issue there or not. Maybe we can get a report back. So if the superintendent would like that, it's up to her. Okay. Okay.
Oh, so we have one motion, one besides the reports, we have one motion is to cut a half million dollars of the administration salaries. And that's this A. So this says here on page 156. The function of these positions, district leadership promoting and engaging the workforce, creating strong community partnerships, strategic planning, recruiting diverse employees, ensuring integrity, securing implementing technology needs, and providing the infrastructure for safe and strong school operations. These include 17 positions, superintendent, deputy superintendent, director of human services, I mean, human resources, I'm sorry. Director of Finance and Operations, procurement, et cetera, et cetera. So the motion is to cut a half million dollars out of that. I'm going to oppose that. Member Mailman?
Clarification. But don't we have to provide the other side? Where is the money going?
The, the motion was to, I'll go back.
But how much, like how much?
And Mr. Biancaria, what was it? It was instructional materials. It was the St. Bernard's Gym, right? For $30,000.
So the gym and instructional materials are the two items?
So it was instructional materials to bring it up 100 per student and then we were looking at...
But that's $600,000. You just asked to move 500.
Right, so we would...
Doesn't add up.
Okay, we have, we'll ask, hang on, let's get the amount. So you told 500,000, you have 30,000 going to St. Bernard's. What are the other categories?
Some was going to Chromebooks, it was spread around.
Yeah, how much was Chromebooks?
And I did have it, but I don't have it right in front of me, so I do apologize. So... Okay.
But there is no shortage on Chromebooks, right? I mean...
36, well, we do have a shortage of the Chromebooks. And the gym was 36. We're looking at the supplies for people to go up on that dollar amount.
So the gym and instructional, so after you take the 36,000, the rest is going instructional materials?
Okay. 206? As I went through it, I apologize, I marked it individually, so I'm trying to find it. So it was under instructional materials. That's where I was hoping most of the money would go and then we were looking at the gym for the Challenge and Reach. And then we did have a shortage of the inventory, so one-on-one for Chromebooks also.
How much on the Chromebooks, though?
Yeah.
So there's $2.3 million in Chromebooks right now, right? As part of the technology package?
Correct.
So much more money than you want to put there? I guess for what purpose?
I would have to ask Mr. Walton what he was, what you're looking for in individual piece.
Mr. Walton?
So through the chair, the, I always, I always take more technology, but I think maybe your request for more Chromebooks was before we got to the technology item that listed the 6,000 Chromebooks. So, you know, I know this is a tough budget year. I'm not going to ask for more than that 6,000. The...
What's the price now for the Chromebooks?
The Chromebooks run with the warranty, run about $300 per Chromebook. Through the chair.
Okay. So if we look for 50 to go there, 50,000, the rest would go towards student supplies?
Okay, so 36 to the Challenge and Reach and 50,000, you said 50,000? To instructional technology? And the difference to instructional materials?
That's fine.
Okay, so, so yes, vote would be to make the cut? And no vote would be not to make the cut? Okay. So, Mr. Good, is Alex on? I can't see him. Is he on? Yeah, okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay, so roll call.
Member Alvarez?
No.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
No.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
No.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
No. Okay. Okay, let's see, five past six. We have a lot of people here, but let's see. Oh, are we all done with this category? So we'll take this, approve it with the, so to approve with the motions with it? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. We can do some, I don't know, I guess, you want to keep on going? You want to take a, we have to come back for 6:30, right? Okay, so we're going to, we're going to adjourn from the budget. I'll see you next in a couple of weeks. We're definitely getting to it because I'm not going home until we've got the whole budget. So I'm sorry about, I should, I was going to make an announcement earlier and I should have. But with that, the motion now is to, the motion now is to, we're all here. I need the committee in the room, please. Member Mailman and Vanessa? Diana, can you stay in, can you stay in the room for one second?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is going to executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and over me may have a detrimental effect on the public buying. And I so declare...
Quiet. You can hear them.
And to the Teamsters Local Union 170 on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Transportation Mechanics and also Core Native School Nurses, Director of Nursing and Health and Services in Worcester Public Schools. And we, after executive session, we're going to return to open session. So roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, then we'll be back, we should be back about 6:30, 6:40 around the other thing. Okay.